Your plan is your phones.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dang it.
With clarification of, um, either three be, oh no, three be, uh, minutes, well, what these minutes to be on the consent agenda? I'll, I'll get some.
Councilmember Darlin, if I were, I would suggest actually that you amend it to be the specific date.
Yeah, I'd like that too, because then we know for sure which minutes we're talking about.
Correct.
So, so town council minutes of January fourteenth and, uh, January sixteenth, special.
Of January fourteenth.
That's my motion.
I'll second.
Motion made in second, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So on the consent agenda, I have a amendment to the minutes, um, under new business, um, through the resolution itself, it says it was carried by four. I vote some, it's actually three minutes.
Which ones?
The very last line under new business for the Tuesday, January sixteenth meeting.
Oh, right.
I got it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Two seconds. I'll second.
Okay, motion made in second, in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we want to be on the public comment period? Anybody in public comment here, Mike?
I am Mike Warren, and I am here in regards to being a member of the media. And I have numerous times pointed out to members of the council that we have not been notified of the council meetings, of which we've not been notified of several here as of recent. And I think that, you know, it's important for you to notify the media because if you don't notify the media, the public does not have any idea you're having a meeting. And we have always been on, I've been here for sixteen years now, and ever since I came to town, we put on notices of the town meetings, and they have been in a faithful manner. But as of recent, it's really pathetic in regard to basic at those notices.
Well, I'll tell you Mike, we have been fighting our internet service up here, we've lost it, we've had teen head over here two or three times.
Do you, do you send, do you send notices out to your councilors?
We haven't been getting them because they've been fighting the internet.
None?
I have, I, I got one day.
Okay, that has a reason here in the last few, but Darlin, you'll remember the joint meeting that the council had with the county, and it was on air quality. I had some things that I felt that I would like to be there for, Darlin even made mention of it, uh, but I was notified ten minutes before that.
I've got the receipt of the notification, so I don't know whose job it is, the town recorder, I would think that's who I thought was in charge of that, and I would just say, it's important for the public to know what's going on from the government entity that you serve on, and you're not getting that information out right now.
Thank you for bringing to our attention that, this is again, this is what's going, but, uh, yeah, there, the mayor does bring up that, we got, um, last time we met at the board, in the regular meeting, that was brought up, about an internet, we came up with what seems to be, you know, a solution hopefully, with some of the stuff that we're gonna be doing, but yeah, absolutely, examiner and you and the other radio station, you've been notified every time of a public meeting, um, it doesn't make any sense why you're not, but we'll get that crazy.
You've been phoned home, would you be, right?
Uh, be ready.
Yeah, yeah, it's.
Sorry, and they just did not go out until Monday, I was gone last week for a family emergency, so I apologize, everything was late to the town.
No, the board is trying to find.
It's not a, it's not a, yeah, it's just clarification, we, we wouldn't know unless somebody brings it to our attention.
Would I just like to raise a point, I know I don't normally cover the town, I'm just covering today because a person can't do it, but the person that normally gets the agendas had to leave early yesterday, and I don't check her emails.
Sorry.
And, no, 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 Dawn, it's not you, I, I don't check that other person's emails, and she generally forwards it straight to me.
Okay.
And, you know, I didn't get that note.
Do we have your email?
What?
Do we have your email?
I, you. Maybe.
Well, I do.
I did for Dawn.
Maybe, I'm not hundred percent sure.
What is your email?
Uh, Kay Winter, Lake County Examiner. Yeah.
All right, let's move on down to old business, um, Rob Thornton, builder, council setting, I did talk to Rob about the, uh, handicap, and he said it would cost no more than two hundred dollars more to make it all handicap, just.
Without all of, I make a motion to approve the Rob Thornton, the builder, with, for the council setting, uh, with that additional cost. Talked about.
Second, motion made in second, in favor?
Aye.
Aye, for both. Okay, and we got four, five, and one comment. All right, Lake County Fairgrounds master plan proposal.
I've done some more research with this, and also been consultation with Orla related to this issue, and also the chamber, and the problem that I've seen with it is the facility is not used enough for tourism, it's really, it's a real gray area, and it's more gray shading to black, as in prohibited, so I would do my legal recommendation that, it's not that it's not a work well program, but I don't know because of the facilities, the facilities' primary uses in tourism, like this was like an international racetrack or something, where most of the people coming that are tourists or something like that, but the majority of the use of fairground is local events, local things, and so because of that issue, and because they are, they want, if you're gonna, th- this master plan thing would be in, work strategic plan for future tourism development, I'm not sure the fairgrounds is ever gonna, I mean, there's definitely some tourism events there, but that is not the majority of what they do, I mean, if you look at their events throughout the year. So it's my legal recommendation that it, that you should deny the application because it, it's in a real gray area, and like I said, I think it's getting right on the edge of something that you guys should, probably shouldn't approve, just because of the.
Well, I just have a question, um, I would miss that last meeting, but did we get a copy of the application?
Months ago.
No, I haven't gotten that.
It was.
At least over the summer.
It was over the summer, once she approached us, yeah, but she never did.
And she had a presentation, a whole presentation, those, those packet of information.
During the morning.
Cause she came and talked to us.
With the application, you're right, I don't know if I was the one who seen the application.
She never did the application.
How can I have the, this, can I step away and give it? No, I don't think you need to give it, I think you, I mean.
We'll, we'll follow up with that.
And, and let's, uh, just take copies and put them in the notes or something, and so we can, I, I understand where some people probably would have pre-ruined it, but, um, I just think that's.
I, and I would suggest that you make sure that they can get to the meeting, I think they deserve to be told to the face, is what a decision the council makes, so I would, I'm just gonna, you can extend a note, that's kind of the, just because we're kind of updating things on this one, that, and if Orla really, like I said, they're kind of the gatekeeper, and also the one that, so they're kind of the experts in this area, but also just from a legal standpoint, it just, they said, if we were dealing with something that was, you know, this was the concert hall, you know, for the Sydney Opera or something like that, you know, where you're, it's constant out of sound, you know, events, and that's just a huge draw, that where it's like ninety-five percent or something along those ninety percent, those kind of activities, I'd say, yeah, probably would be okay, but it's in this one where it's so, you know, there's, I'm thinking of Roundup and a couple other, the majority of events really are.
The rodeo, the Roundup, anytime, there's the Derby there.
Well, the Derby's included in the Roundup.
So, right.
Um, you've got Willie Jane, Lucky Mountain Elk out there, um.
There are things that walk from.
But there, it's very local people that go there.
That, that's the majority, what you really wanna look is for some, the idea is really, the majority of people that you want to come in there have to come from at least fifty miles away, and that's the.
So.
The mountain elk, yeah. Willie Jane, all that, Lucky Mountain brings in plenty of.
So Mayor, if I may real quick, that's to try and trip you off here, but this is exactly why those that complained about our way we're handling these funds, and then we adopted the policy, which talks about application periods we review four times a year, is key, because if we don't look at these all at the same time period, we're gonna overspend, and I have the money according to the policy that we set, and for this, the approach that people are taking, especially in this case, I think is just wrong, like, she could've said, Ronnie could've said, it was for other things, and that this would just go into the, the general budget, which is all related to tourism, the master plan itself, they could've been taken from other funds within her budget, and she could've done a resolution to change it, and the approach could've worked perfectly with everything related to tourism that happens year round at the fairground, which is to bring people in. And I don't know how the discussion, like, the minutes are definitely shortened compared to what we used to do with minutes. So, you know, I didn't listen to the audio of the meeting, but people's approach needs to be shown, but that, that comes to our responsibility in a sit-down, public, open meeting session where we explain what we're looking for in applications, which is, again, something we'll review as, on a quarterly basis in, as a whole, according to the policy that we set at fifty percent to short-term grants, and fifty percent to long.
I guess what I'm saying is if the council's the one that has to make the decision about who gets the money, we need to see the application.
Yeah, you're just talking about the actual application we, we passed after they made the grant request. They made the grant request prior to us.
Yeah, we were right on the people.
We had, yeah, we hadn't actually passed our application.
Okay.
And I think our discussion, you've got another one.
That's very truthful, yeah.
Okay, well then, I thought, I thought you've got a new application.
And I think our discussion was kind of back and forth on whether or not people that already applied had to fill out the application or not.
Yeah, I remember that, but I just thought they reapplied.
Okay, good, she could re, one thing that she could do, if she wanted to use this money, this strategic, strategic plan, as a supply is problematic. If the, if they wanted to go for a tourism campaign of, hey, come to the Lake County Fairgrounds, and it's primarily targeted outside of the area, that would be, that's a, that's exactly a different story, and so that might be, if, if that's what the council would like to maybe see, if she applied that direction, maybe that's what she ought to look at, and then like I said, then they can do, they could use that part of their budget and then do other things, if that's what they wanna do. What goes on internally in the organization isn't our issue, as long as you're using it for that purpose, so that is, that would clearly be something that would fall within. So that might be an idea, so if that's the council's pleasure, you might just ask the chairman to reach out and say, you know, this, think about using it for, doesn't really fly.
So by table-ing this and not saying, you know, now, the manager could still go back and say, hey, would you?
Well, I think we have to deal with that application and then, you know, and let them know why we have not accepted it.
Kind of a.
Certainly.
But this seems to be.
Yeah, 'cause this one probably should be denied on the fact that it don't fit into the criteria of tourism, travel.
In, you know, I think if any of them are denied, we need to give them a written response, that's why.
And that's where I, I'm just saying, if, maybe she rather have them, I'm correct, but I'm saying, I'm not, I wasn't denied, I would do that application resubmit it, and or resubmit it while it's something that fit tourism, and everybody would.
Well, she can still refuse it.
We could actually table it indefinitely, which will mean it does not come back to, um, discussions as the application was presented, it doesn't deny it or approve it.
Well, just as Jeff said, Truket said, it'd be nice to tell it to a court, but I don't think we should make any decision on it right now, and then, in the meantime, we'll put out, hold, the next time, and maybe by then she resubmit something else and withdraw the original application. Again, it, come back to our policy of when do we review these, and it's, we adopted a policy of once a quarter.
Gotta get them in to get to review them.
We need to review them as soon as they come into our office.
Oh, I see that. Wait, well, that's not what we adopted as a policy.
But we don't have any.
No, if they're, that's, they have to have them in, that's not the case, but by that.
Do you have a copy of the ordinance, Michelle?
Can I have this?
When did you get your copy of the ordinance?
Uh, after everything went down.
If you have like an updated, okay, not some per capita, would you, would you mind for?
I know our discussion talked about deciding when we need.
Yeah, we discussed.
The deadline, people go ahead and find out the deadline that we discussed. Because we're getting more and more, we're gonna get lots more requests, and there will come a point where we can't fund everything, it's getting passive, so that's why we wanted to review them fully, when the money come before.
We'll see what the ordinance is, I thought there was a deadline.
There is a deadline for them to turn them in, and then specific dates for us to meet.
Work session.
Yeah, we, yeah, 'cause we've wanted to review them all as a bunch, so that we would not pick winners and losers.
Cause we wanna balance, like, you know, we sit here with three of them.
Same as, one comes in, six months later another come in, can't let, not sit there.
Well, that's why we did a quarter, and it's not unusual, you have a quarter earlier annually for a town. Um, but that's where we sit there and say, okay, we have, we, we wanna spend thirty thousand dollars this quarter, we got three of them, which one can we fund? Or can we fund these two over this one? Exactly, because.
And I would suggest that you do them, whatever time of the quarter you pick, you do it after, you read the quarter receipts, you know where you're at.
Yeah, we set a, we set a date, I'm pretty sure.
They can talk about the money after we got our receipts.
Yeah.
Receipts.
Yeah.
I'm trying to.
I don't know. I wanna say it was like March or April, May or. I think April.
Yeah. Yeah, it was April, July.
In January.
In January, yeah, 'cause it was offset for each, when you, when you bump them in, right.
Yes.
Right.
And you might just wanna select, if you guys are ready to do it, you guys might wanna look at dates and just say, hey, folks, this is the worst, so, you know.
Set it a month in advance.
Application just, yeah, set it a month in advance, that way folks know, hey, this is when you're gonna be coming in, before we consider it.
I thought we had like the second meeting of the month or something, in those months, something like that.
Mayor, we can table this during the meeting, we continue this discussion when she gets back.
Yeah, and then I can give you guys an update real quick on the, I'll second that, if you wanna table it for tonight, later in the evening.
No, yeah, just later in the meeting, not us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Open that discussion again. So, um, first off, I talked to John here with ODFW, and apparently it was somehow reported that he was supposed to be here at our last meeting. I don't remember that we requested him to be here.
No, I talked to him, he said, you don't need it, once we get this ordinance, and like, definitely come in.
Okay, so that's, that's not quite accurate, but first off, I just wanted to make sure everybody, he was not supposed to be here, we didn't request him to be here, but I pointed out.
No, cause he said the same thing to me on the phone too, that until our ordinance was in place, he would not come down until we had everything set, so.
Just came from his boss.
Yes, but it's not him coming down, it's not, that's, it's not like he was, I'm talking about the meeting that we had a couple weeks ago. It was reported that he was supposed to be here, that was not the case.
I asked him to come, but he said, the guy had plans, I asked him to come.
Okay.
And he said, until we get the ordinance in place, there's nothing they can do.
I'm just talking about the meeting that's in the meeting.
Okay, so what else we'll find out?
So, then, um, so, I talked to Burns as well today, the town manager, and I talked to John here, and I have calling for Valas, 'cause I know they have some stuff in there. So the way that it works is ODFW does not fund any of it, the town has to pay for it. So in Burns, we talked about whether or not it was effective, one of the key components to the state law that passed is ordinance or enforcement has to be in place in order for ODFW to give permits, they do not kill, they do not relocate, it is at the cost of the town. So, um, what Burns did is they took a vote after they got estimates on, um, the processing, roughly a hundred and fifty to two hundred and fifty dollars in their area per year. They were given fifty permits, twenty-five for mine, it's twenty-five for Burns. And they would have to pay for it, so they put it to a public vote, which I think is a great idea, because I think the public is obviously who we serve, but they put euthanize, I see the deer as a problem, I support euthanizing them, I see the deer as a problem, but I'd rather the money be spent on roads, waters, et cetera, leave it as is, or I see, uh, I don't see the deer as a problem at all. So those were the four questions, the majority of the community voted leave it as is. Because that, I mean, that's roughly seventy-five hundred to twelve thousand dollars that they would have to go for, for enforcement. Yeah, yeah, annually, so they would be issued roughly fifty permits, um, that also adds the component of our local law enforcement officers having to deal with the process of getting rid of them. So, um, and of course, ODFW is not legal for any injuries and property damage and, you know, liability in related to that. So, um, I, I think that Burns has basically said that they just don't see a lot of success with it, they do find people, and they do send a letter, um, but they are in a situation similar to us where enforcement is an issue for any nuisance ordinance, you know, small. Not a high generating, revenue generating source, but, um, I think the idea of putting it to a public opinion.
To survey, like with the water bill or something, exactly, and then that way you can kind of get the, and see how much people, and I would also throw in survey,
This may be okay on a new day. Online.
This, in a similar community, this cost roughly, you know, we're looking at somewhere, this could cost between seven five hundred and twelve thousand dollars from the city budget, and that would be an annual expense, and that way, that way you'd give it full background, so that's not a bad idea, and if he, and people are really, if people really believe it's important, they'll indicate that, and if they don't, then.
Exactly, and I get that it's an, I mean, I get that it's an issue, I sustain personal, like, twenty-five hundred dollars worth. But they need my one hundred dollars, but, but, um, you know, also we need to, if you do put it to the public, we need to probably check with our local, um, meat processor for the events, but we have still hensons.
And two million ones.
Yeah, we have one, so, because we wanna keep our business in the community, obviously, um, and it makes more sense anyways, but, um, and it would be under, probably under contract, you know, but I think we need to get a rough estimate for them for expense, in addition, the good, the good thing is, is that the money can, or the food, the meat, can be used for the food, if, if we, you know, so I mean, there is, there is some good science to it, but it does have to be inspected and be certified by. Yeah, so we would have to make sure that that's something that the local vendor can do as well. And.
I'm looking for meat and cheese.
Uh, yeah, I'm not sure.
And then we have.
I'll get one as well. So we need to take all of that cost into consideration as well, transportation costs, because they're significant, but I like the idea of putting it to the public whole. Because what the majority thinks is, whether or not we financially pay, but I don't know, so that's what, what I got on that.
Okay. Um, now, you wanna go back up to the fairground master plan thing again, or?
Are we gonna table the, uh?
We're gonna make a decision on that ordinance.
The deer ordinance? Are we tabling the deer ordinance?
Yeah.
And I think, before you do that, there is one other issue too, that you've gotta deal with, and it's, I hate to be do this, but when you have ordinances like that, you have a neighbor dispute, and neighbors don't like each other, the town officials are then willing to have to go out, and so and so is feeding their deer, and somebody did take pictures, something like that, you're not gonna have enough evidence to go forward, 'cause obviously you're not gonna just go off somebody's word, and so you're get, you're also gonna have a nuisance official that may have more imminent things, like somebody dumping trash in their backyard or something along those lines, if that's what you guys end up doing with the nuisance person going forward, do you really want their time spent dealing with people that are not getting along, I mean, this is a, this is a way that people harass each other, so that is, that's always an unintended side consequence of things like this, so that's something else that has to be in mind.
Well, yeah, we talked about that a little bit before.
Right.
And I just remembered in my old age, no, it's two thousand six. A violation has to be seen by who is issuing the citation.
It either has to be, it either has to be seen or with a nuisance, there, there's gotta be some evidence of either picked up photo evidence or something along those lines, so.
Or something.
And I think that's where we need to, I mean, I get where people are coming from, but we need to also look at how, all of it, I mean, what it encompasses and
Well, I.
the follow-through that would be required, and how, yeah.
I have the, um, I still have a problem with the, the fine thing, which I think that she sends a letter first, and then a fine of fifty dollars or something.
And you can't do that, I mean, that's absolutely, a schedule like that is not an uncommon, we don't, that is our normal process with nuisances.
Right.
Once it be like built legally or.
Cause you send them a letter with the ordinance, and tell them what, the way that's sent.
Right.
Okay. All right, let's move on down.
So, so can we put together, table that, and we put together a poll and follow up with that? I would assume that'd be, uh, Michelle's, for you to put it on a Facebook page and incorporate it into our bill.
Uh, are you talking about Water Bill?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I'm not sure.
Water Bill, look cards now.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that involves an expensive meal and everything.
Exactly, so.
Yeah, so it, but the, it's not in the paper option here in the town law, it was not.
The only issue is you're not gonna get necessarily very scientific, um, that, that, that turns into, you gotta figure out about response rates and stuff like that, so that's the one. I guess the other option that you guys could do as well is you set up a public session with, and have, you know, and by announcing the public session, you can put in there that we will also be reviewing what goes on through survey monkey, you can do it all online, and then if people are interested otherwise, then they can come in and pick up a paper copy, and we can tabulate it that way, or they can come to the meeting, you know, you can do this public hearing, so that would be in the process, and that gives people, not really need to come in and, or circle it together.
But is that a, you or you have to follow up or free to poll?
A free poll.
Survey monkey's free.
I think it's fine, you know, doing polls are always tar, hard, because you're not sure what the data is really showing, if you don't get, you know, more than fifty percent of people respond, but those polls you don't get that much, so, you know, I, but I do like the data, I mean, I definitely, and then you can call someone out.
We, we also need someone to come and.
I just don't think.
Show love to my drive point from the deer.
Right, that's my biggest problem.
Okay.
Do you wanna now go back to the master plan proposal?
While we have the wrong ordinance here.
It might, she, she wants to make some cards for the tax.
There's like a five, ten-page logging tax application.
Um, Dawn, make a thought.
Okay, there's so much.
Cause that's, that is a corporate, a reference.
Okay, so. All right, let's, let's move on down. Uh, mic number seven, averaging traffic on South Side.
Come up with.
Have you heard anything from the?
They just wanted to move forward, I mean, I, I know, um, our engineer said that, that, uh, we didn't wanna, he didn't recommend the closed road.
No, permanently, no.
No, permanently, I actually disagree with that, because I think the third utility's all over the place, so you can still get to, what the school decides to do with that road, you know, for that area, that space, I still think that we can get to all the utilities, we, it, either the roads can remain, and we can still get to it, and just have an easement with the school to get to it, or the school can move that possibly, and couldn't build over it without changing one of those utilities ours off. To me, I, I don't see any problem with making the road, and I think we should move forward with the procedures and process to make it a road, which is notifying the adjacent, and making sure we have a, a buying of that, there's not that many that would be affected, um, by the, have to go around to get to the hospital. It's a safety issue, and everybody's seen it, and everybody knows it, and I think it's, it's important that we act on it, and as a school member of this, of this lady, most of you know that already, or all of you, you know, a school member, and I think it's important for the safety of our kids, first and foremost. And budget speaking, it's one less road, or section of the road that we have to maintain, so that's a must to do.
I, I did meet with Will Cato and Man, and we talked about the gates, and that's the, probably the least expensive thing for the school to do, and they're actually gonna get quotes on that, and they're happy with that, and then the, the one gate where they come from ADA with Fremont, you know, they come out by the crosswalk, they're gonna move that behind the closed gates, so when they're crossing, they'll be crossing the closed road.
So you're gonna move it further back a little bit, towards the road.
You know, you have the road there, you have that playground at ADA, other, um, American Services or.
They drive around.
There's two different points.
Yeah, and, and the school, front of the school.
And it was still, oh, and there's still, yeah, but gates, it's still.
I'm talking about if we vacated and you make it in.
And the road was gone.
Yes, if they drive on it just like now.
And, and the way those gates will be laid out, the whole front of the school will be open if there's an emergency or shooting or anything like that, where they're not gonna be behind the fence or a gate. So it's, and Susan said she'll deal with the opening and closing, how they handle and all that stuff. So last.
They can't do much without us taking the directive to get it vacated.
Right.
Or they can file it. I mean.
This, this is a.
Anyone can file a formal vacation request.
Right, right. Well, that, that, that's a quick fix. So we don't end up with a kid hit, because it is a huge issue. You know, I mean, you see it, cause you're there a lot with your kids, and I see it, cause I'm there, seeing my wife and other things I do at the school, but it, it is a huge issue. So they're gonna do the gates. As far as I, I know, they're gonna get a quote from Bowers fans under those gates. There'll be, uh, man gates on both ends, so they can close the road and leave the sidewalk open. Or they can close the sidewalk and the road at the same time.
I just still leave the sidewalk open.
Well, probably.
That's part of the concern, but not that a car, I guess.
That, that's part of the safety. It's the person that leaves the hospital that's here for a psych evaluation to end up on playgrounds.
It really is, I mean.
Several times a year.
And still, depending on what gate they put up and if they can get around it or not.
They're not gonna be able to get around.
They wouldn't. They absolutely wouldn't. From, especially from the south. That would be gated. And that's where you go, you would not be able to.
Those, those gates are gonna tie into the existing fence of those playgrounds. And there is nowhere around it without finding all the tents.
Prior to, like, the side of the creek.
It'll be, you know, where the creek goes. It'll be right there at the creek where the fence starts. And then it'll come up to just about the end of the fence at Fremont.
Mm-hmm.
And then that one eighty A will be moved back where we're crossing within those gates.
And it'll be a temporary road closure, like we already have set the order, so just expand it to.
Right, you know. So I will choose them a better barricade.
And we have this temporary situation with the school too, for that to be a one-way area. So are we, I mean, we have, I guess only three options, do nothing, do a temporary street closure kind of thing, which is, you know.
What we're currently doing.
But.
We've already called.
Yeah, but, but allow the school to also, and that's still part of that option, is allow them to gate it.
Correct, and that would.
Not just barricade it, because barricades don't work.
Right, just driving through them and all of them.
So we really need to, I didn't, we, we need to decide to allow them formally to build gates across it. Or we need to go through a formal true road vacation, which is a permanent thing. Plus, obviously, they asked to undo it and, yeah, it goes back.
Well, I, I think, you, I mean, you got a very valid point, Darma. And I think what we should do is allow them to do the gates and then start the process to make it that way. Cause the gates, gates are not gonna be that expensive and it's, it's a quick fix now, but.
That's what they would do regardless if they closed it. So we could then, on a temporary basis, say, hey, you could drop that up and have it on the next meeting probably, just to say, hey, we're gonna temporarily close the street just as we have.
Yeah, well, there'll be.
Between the months of September and, you know.
And it'll be posted on both sides of the street on permanent side.
Yeah.
And the hours it's gonna be closed.
But we already know allowing them to block the street next.
Technically, but it's, uh, during certain hours, it's not.
Well, we'll, we'll change.
Well, it, it'll still be just at now.
It'll still open it up. It would be open, but it's still not a session.
We'll be closed every morning and open every morning.
I mean, if they actually push that sidewalk down quite a ways, they could create additional parking.
Parking's not even an issue.
They're not.
We're not taking any part.
Issue there.
It's not a parent's, but it's not a.
If you were a sucker, maybe, no.
It's not for the school, cause we're not taking any party at all.
No, but, but they could. But, well, drop off is an issue with parking, from my understanding, but, I mean, they could create, they push that sidewalk further down.
I will tell you from a legal standpoint, folks, that you have a lot less parties you're dealing with if you just go with the temporary closure option. Cause we are gonna need to contact every utility, we have franchise agreements with that run through there and get their buy-off, because they are a party with it. Because we've signed agreements that they're using our right of ways in that area. Plus, then we also have to figure out our own. So it's not insurmountable, but it's gonna take a while. I think the cleanest, fastest solution, at least for temporary, and it isn't still with the road vacation later, but you're perfectly blunt from a legal standpoint, the temporary closure during the same hour, all we're doing is expanding something we're already doing.
Right, right. And that's why I think we should approve that.
With the moving forward of vacate, vacating it, because once.
Cause if it takes a year, at least we have a gate set a year.
Once we vacate it, is their, their responsibility, their needs change?
The bottom line is to save those kids.
With those kids, is their needs changed with those kids and the setup between the schools? We know there's a lot of funding this working through the state to help repair and rebuild schools. Once we vacate it, that's theirs to do what they want with. We don't have to, to pull ourselves back into it. So I think we should let, do what we're doing the temporary and move forward to vacate it. Like, I'm not hesitant about that. I think that's where we should have that right for the best safety of the kids.
Just leave it, just leave it temporary permit, because it is now, not vacate the street.
I think we should start working towards vacating it. So they have rights to that property to do what's best for the school and the safety of those kids.
So this is public. That's a public street. Okay, so, so I think we're.
But they're not a thing.
While I'm hearing from the discussion, we're cool with the school going with the, the gate.
The gate.
So do you, do we need a motion to make it, that it allowed to be made?
We need to amend, we need, I need to, I need the dimensions and what the terms of that are going to be, and then we need to amend the ordinance that is authorized in temporary closures.
Okay, I'll work with Susan and Will on that. I'll have a four-year drive again in the next week.
Perfect.
And that will be, and that I think is the simplest way of doing it. That way it's very clear.
So you need the, the dates from this day to this day for the school, school year, and you want the dimensions of the gates?
Yes, the dimensions of what's being closed and also the, you know, the sidewalk, you know, as far as, you know, from this block, this block.
I'll give, I'll give you a drawing and a description.
Yeah. I just wanted to be very clear, so that way somebody doesn't come in and say, hey, you didn't actually close the hole. Does, does that make sense? I don't want anybody.
No, I can, I can draw it up. It's no big deal. And I'll get the dates and the times and everything from Susan and Will and I'll give that all to you.
So, and, and it seems like with all this, that maybe we're wanting the school to just make a formal request, because we're hesitant to make such a motion.
No, they, they have.
Maybe one.
No, I mean, in writing where it's, because there's an, the county has an application process for a, a street vacation. But they need to formally do something like that, more than just come in and ask us to do it. And I think you should, we should direct them to make a formal application and.
You're, yeah.
I, I can. And Susan's willing to do that. She, when I met with her, she goes, where do we go from here? I said, just go ahead and get your estimates. And then I'll let you know what we, what we needed to do at that point. So if you, you know, if we need an end writing from the school, that this is, you know, they want to, they wanna vacate that road and take over that section. Or the gate, for the gates and for that separately, that's fine too. I can get with Susan and Will on that and they, they'll make that request and they can get writing on the on the stationery and make it all legal and.
So would that be something that goes through planning as well for us?
Yes, that would be planning.
Yes.
But who would ultimately make the decision that goes through the planning commission?
First, and then they make a recommendation, and then it goes to council to approve or disapprove based on the staff report that goes in there.
Right.
And like I said, you, we're gonna have to bring in all the stakeholders. This is gonna take quite a while, cause like I said, we need to get the right, you know, I believe there's internet, if I rock it. And we are also gonna have to work out some kind of an agreement amongst everybody for making sparring utilities as well. So if.
Right, that's why we wanna go ahead and approve, you know, have them make the formal request for the gates. And we could approve that. Cause the bottom line is the safety of the kids.
Absolutely.
That, that is absolutely the bottom line. I think we're all on the same side on that.
So exactly how you get there is kind of the final solution. And then the council then needs to decide based, if the school wants to apply for it, we need to deal with the application.
Right. I mean, once, once we get the gates approved, I mean, depending on where the school works, it's on, on funding for it, they could probably have been done in sixty days.
But what we need is to table this, so that additional information can be gathered to amend an ordinance.
Well.
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Yes, that's exactly right.
So I'll make a motion for that.
I'll second it.
Motion then second, table it.
And then we'll, I'll get everything together.
Yeah.
And I'll have Susan write a letter requesting the gates and we're getting allowed to do that. Yep, so, okay, I'll, I'll handle that and I'll have a team next week.
And then like I said, I would suggest as far as, because like the school does apply for it, there is some costs associated with it, with vacation process. When an entity applies for it, there's, the town's not out money, there's such a short cost of publication and contact with everybody else and anything else like that.
Is there estimated cost on that? Cause they don't want, schools can wanna know that.
And everything involved with that, that is a very good question, because you've got newspaper publication, however long that's gonna be, so you're probably four or five, four to six hundred dollars for that.
We can talk about all that.
Exactly.
But, but, let's deal with the gates as we're now.
Let's deal with it immediately.
Well, that's where, that's where, yeah, just get whatever you can from the school and then come back to us, cause we may want to disissue it all. I mean, I'm gonna work with the rest of us, so.
And that application process may come.
Write up.
Well, let's, let's get the gates up. I'll make a motion in, in a second. Fill the paper. I.
Alright.
Alright, move on. You can't be sitting here all night, beating on the same gr- subject for an hour. Mm-hmm. Let's go down to T N S contract town hall committee.
Um, I'm gonna move back to February eleventh. Jeff and I are still working on it.
Okay. And I wanna make sure that what I present you guys has been met in both parties, so that way you guys can either approve it, disapprove it, and know that it's not gonna be submitted to approval by T N S.
Got it. Awesome, thanks.
Okay. Uh, let's go to West Side Parents, I'm new business.
Did you guys wanna look back, sorry, did you guys wanna look back first to the lodging tax?
Alright, yeah.
So if you guys look at your packet, it's on the set, the dates you guys were looking for are under the grant application process on page two, under grant application process. And, um, it says applications must be submitted prior to event and be reviewed by town council quarterly for the fiscal year in the months of January, April, July, and October. So whatever quarter an application comes in under, that will be then, uh, that, that will be the date of.
Yeah, whatever quarter it comes in under will be handled at that meeting, that will be preemptive on. They'll follow in here.
Yeah, exactly.
Good.
Okay. Now, we table this for the discussion all the way till April. Unless it's an outstanding one, it's, it's, obviously, we say it's.
Like the fairground one.
Yeah, the fairground one. But aim between now and April, that first day.
We're not gonna vote up until April.
Yeah, why don't you vote up until April?
Yeah, and then.
So, your first meeting in April.
So the first meeting in April is gonna have a, every one of these, every one of these months that you, you need to have on the first meeting,
Oh, yeah, we've got that.
you need to have a work session scheduled and then probably a public session for, for doing those applications. So just plan on your first meeting of that, of, of April, of January, April, July, October, having a work session and then.
The second meeting have a vote, pardon?
No.
Vote, work session, have a vote.
Well, we can vote.
Work, it'll be work session and then vote after.
Vote in the regular meeting.
So, it would be a running lodging tax, transient lodging tax, work session. And, um.
Free apartment, I reckon, we need a floor to go on.
This is, um, where, you know, first you learn as you go. But, you know, we said January, well, that doesn't tell us that somebody turns it in the day before. That's really not time for us to, or week before, or two weeks before, it's really not time for us to. We should have probably given ourselves a moment. It does say prior to the event and reviewed in the month of, so really, we could have reviewed it in the month of April, July, it's the prior two, and we did not the other day. But let's say the event was February first, somebody gives it to us, you know, January fifth.
The two late.
So it still says it's prior to.
Correct, but it, it, but it, it's prior to the event, but it's gonna be, yeah, but the approval meeting's gonna be after the event happens. That's gonna be.
Well, no, cause it was, our first meeting in January would have been after they turned it in, but not really giving us much time. So, cause I'm a visual person, looking at a calendar.
Well, you guys might wanna say all applications for quarter one are due by.
Yes, thank you, that's my point.
That might be something, and that, that is something we could bend with this. Like I said, this is resolution, so this is not ridiculously difficult to, to do. So do you guys wanna pick some dates or think about some dates?
We, we need to pick some dates.
We probably want them the month before. Like, if we're gonna look at something in January, we probably want them to plot by December in the latest.
Yeah. Yeah, the end of the prior month.
Yeah, because that one for the roundup was turned in in January. And, and that, it didn't really give us the time
Yeah.
that we needed to have any additional meetings about.
So to stick with the quarter, I think we should do it by the end of the quarter and then actually have the work session going on the second meeting of that, that April.
Yeah, because there are people already.
Are the second meeting of the following month. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah.
January is too early. The, the first week in January too.
It is too early.
Especially for new counselors. Next year we'll have new counselors, and that's the first meeting, it's supposed to grow up.
You're wrong.
Yeah, yeah. So I think, you know, the quarter at, you know, second, it's the second meeting of the month following the end of the quarter.
But then.
Well, but that doesn't.
It definitely is a month prior.
We need to put that in, in the month prior.
Council, can I suggest this? Applications for an upcoming quarter need to be submitted in the prior quarter.
I know.
And so you, here's a suggestion. Why don't we come back to you with, with a proposed schedule?
Yeah.
And then you guys can take a look at it kind of along those lines. So Michelle and I will work on looking at the big, greatest calendar dates, looking to picture you guys have had the time with the idea of having a first meeting for a work session, a second meeting, and also it's gonna be flexible enough for.
Yeah.
Yeah, like I said, this is a work in progress. I mean, this.
Definitely.
Yeah, why I think a, a work session of the first meeting and then vote at the second meeting, that way you have time to do everything.
That's good.
We have time to discuss it.
And that's not to be, because I, I think there was some clarification. Anybody can present their, offer their grant at any time. We will not vote on them until.
We're not gonna make a decision until the last meeting.
We are concerned.
Okay, that's enough of it. Let's move on. Do you got somewhere to be? You got a date? Like, great. No, I'm just tired of being, no, the same thing for an hour.
But we are, we are giving our directive to our attorney. I don't understand his attitude. Like, I really don't.
Done that.
We're trying to have a work session. Like, everybody at the table wants to have a discussion. We're.
Alright, keep going. I thought, I thought. We have somewhere to be at five, so we understand, but we have one more item on the list. And you guys have that, exactly, that session going.
You do?
Yep.
Always a little bit.
Yeah, that, that's.
Okay, it's nice to know that there is one this time.
Well, it, you would have loved.
But it's always on the agenda.
It's every time. Like, we had it on last time.
You ask for it, it's on the agenda. It doesn't mean we have.
Anyway, let's move on.
By West Side Parents Club Union Warriors, Warriors asking for donation for the spring children's carnival. We've donated to this in the past.
I think it's definitely something we're supporting. I would make a motion to, um, approve a SWIFT pass.
Family.
Family SWIFT pass. Uh, to donate to the West Side Terrace Club Union Warriors for the spring children's carnival.
I have a motion.
That was a motion, I'll second.
I have a second.
I'll second it.
My motion taken second, fill the paper.
Aye.
Okay. Now, we'll move on down to schedule the work session. This work session is with, um, Department of Forestry. They've been doing our burning up the canyon. And we have eighteen hundred acres up there, the longest in the city. No, there's timber in there that, to be, uh,
Of the city.
Select log, the longest in the city. We should get money off of that, but, um, that's where they can go in and get rid of the more of the junipers, get in those groves, and hopefully bring more springs up, more springs up, up there.
When do we wanna schedule this work session?
We were talking about February sixth.
February sixth, this would be what I'd say.
At three o'clock.
I would also suggest that you guys have the city engineer and, um, break the public works there, just so you've got all of the stakeholders.
And, and you said this was Department of Forest Street, and the four services involved, um, V L M, um.
So the forest service is not gonna do the volume, the recognized, select volumes, what I call, and to do.
No.
Right.
And I think you guys would need to put up a bid, you know, as far as.
Right.
Are you an outreach company over ten thousand?
Yeah. Exactly. So you need to put up a bid and then basically kind of follow the process. And I believe all the stakeholders getting together, because I think there probably will be surrounding, uh, that's happened to be, you know, forest service and everything else. Are, I think, trying to coordinate a plan, so it's for overall forest health.
Right, 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 too.
Right, quite.
Mm-hmm. And that might, this.
That's a nice cover.
That, you know, that might be a, um, that might be something, maybe talk to either Daryl or, um, Jeff about, maybe contact some of those landowners. Because if they are trying to kind of do this coordinated plan, and maybe the feds aren't doing that, and that's maybe find that out first. But it might be good to kind of coordinate, because you might be able to get a better bid, and you can get a, that whole group, you know, maybe federal, city, and then private landowners all going in together, presented as a bigger unit, potentially.
We'll discuss that in the work session.
Right.
Okay. So February sixth.
For three.
Four, that's three.
Three.
Three. Here?
Yep.
We will adjourn in the regular session at, um, four forty-eight.